Ms. Wilson?
Good evening, Ms. Madam Mayor Pro Tem, Ms. Devine, Ms. Moore. Do you want to call the roll, please?
Good evening, Mr. Rickaman.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell. Mr. Duval.
Present.
Ms. Devine.
Here.
Mr. Davis. Mayor Benjamin.
Pledge of Allegiance. I don't know if you have anyone in particular.
Okay, everybody would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all.
Councilman McDowell, will you do us the privilege of starting us in prayer?
Merciful God, for all that you've done for us. The blessings of this day, this time, and this hour, we pray now that as we gather in this chamber that we might sense and feel the needs of our city. Not only will we sense and hear those needs, but we pray for sensitivity that we might do something about those needs. Bless us individually and collectively. Allow our city to continue to grow and prosper. We ask it in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much Reverend McDowell.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, we have a few items that we would ask you all to adopt for the agenda. Just an addition of the presentation of the Ridgewood Missionary Baptist Church Young Women's Auxiliary Day Proclamation. We'll be adding a presentation of the Statement of Support for the Guard and Reserve by General John Finan. And we are deferring consideration of item number thirty-two, ordinance number two thousand seventeen zero seven zero, authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the license agreement between the City of Columbia and Hallmark Homes International, Inc., just due to the backup material needing to be updated. And we'll bring that item back at the next council meeting.
Okay. Is there a motion of adoption of the agenda with those additions?
So move it.
Second.
Okay, so it's been properly moved in second. If the clerk will read the roll.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Ms. Devine.
Aye.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, we would ask for any public input related to the agenda items as outlined.
Seeing none.
Thank you, and the approval of the minutes from the August fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, city council meeting.
Is there a motion?
I move approval of the minutes of August the fifteenth as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, if the clerk will read the roll.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Ms. Devine.
Aye.
Consent agenda items four through twenty-two, we are asking council to give consideration of these items. Madam Mayor Pro Tem.
Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda through item twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Is there a second?
Second, I do have one question.
Okay. Councilman Rickaman has a question.
On item number nine, I was just curious why there was such a difference in the budgeted number was three sixty-three and the awarded amount was three oh five. Just was curious if, why that was.
Um, I did not catch that in agenda review because that's a number. I usually ask about a number off by that amount too, but I'm hoping it's savings.
Well, man, I like the savings. Just curious.
We were, um, this, we, this was a competitive bid, councilman, and that was the low bid. It happened to be the only bid that we received in that competitive bid, but we were delighted to get that.
You mean, we got one bid and it actually didn't cost us more? I'm very impressed. Thank you.
We were excited, yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Well, that was good to bring that to all of our attention. Thank you, Mr. Rickaman.
All right, any other questions or discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, if the clerk will read the roll.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Ms. Devine.
Aye.
Moving into a period of other matters, council is asked to approve services for a portable ice rink rental as requested by the Parks and Recreation Department, the award to Magic Ice USA in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. This vendor is located in Miami, Florida.
Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, mind?
Yes, Mr. Duval.
Uh, I'd like to move that we disapprove this contract, and I'd like to speak on the subject.
Okay. So there's a motion for disapproval. Is there a second to that?
Question, question.
Okay, Councilman McDowell.
You saying disapprove or you talking about totally eliminated? What are you saying?
Disapproving it would eliminate it.
And eliminated would disapprove it.
I believe that's correct.
I think, the reason I ask that is that I think we need to be very specific as you, um, as you take this as a part of our minutes. Um, if we're looking for disapproval, I mean, I'm for that. If we're looking for total elimination, I think we need to be semantically correct.
And, okay, so there was a motion. I don't know if there is a second to that motion, but I also wanted to, and Randy's coming forward. I was going to ask, is it time sensitive? I know that the mayor would likely want to speak on this and maybe Mr. Davis. So if it's not time sensitive, I'm wondering if Mr. Duval would withdraw his motion and allow us to hold it until we have a full council.
A full council being the mayor coming back or a full council being Mr. Wadere coming back? Or Mr. Davis coming back?
No, Mr. Davis coming back. Mister, I would think Mister, um, the mayor and Mr. Davis would want to be here for a discussion of this magnitude.
I'd be glad to withdraw.
Randy, is it time sensitive?
It is time sensitive because November is right around the corner. We generally start operating the week of Thanksgiving.
Okay, can we hold it till the mayor gets back at least and then?
That's your turn.
Okay, so let's just hold number twenty-third until the mayor gets back.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Randy. We'll move into zoning matters, a second reading, number twenty-four, which is an annexation, comprehensive plan map amendment and zoning map amendment for the parcels as outlined on Jacobs Mill Pond Road.
Is there a motion?
Move approval of the annexation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if the clerk will read the roll.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Ms. Devine.
Aye.
Moving into a period of presentations, we will begin with the End Child Hunger Week Proclamation the Honorable Mayor Pro Tem Tamika Isaac Devine.
All righty, and I think we do have some folks up here for this, but and I'll wait and read it. Y'all have the events? Because y'all used to tell us the events and stuff, won't you? Stand right here. Good to see you guys again. I can't believe it's been a year.
I know.
So you want to read that and then you want me to tell you about some events that we have? I will, yes, I'll go ahead and read it first, okay? So, whereas one in five children in South Carolina live in families where their full nutritional needs are not met, and whereas it is fitting and proper that our community at large, local and state government officials, state agencies, stakeholders from nonprofits, community-based organizations, schools, and the faith-based community unite to reduce the number of youth facing hunger in our schools, neighborhoods, and city. And whereas it's fitting and proper to bring awareness to local, state, and national efforts led by the United States Department of Agriculture, Secretary Sunny Purdue, to end child hunger, and whereas these efforts will lead to a better quality of life for all youth living in Columbia, South Carolina. Now therefore, on behalf of our mayor, Stephen K. Benjamin, along with all the members of Columbia City Council, we do hereby proclaim October twenty-second through twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen, to be End Child Hunger Week in the great city of Columbia, and we urge all of our citizens to recognize and participate in its observance. We will make the formal presentation, but y'all always have some great events. So go ahead and let us know what's going on.
So we'll be celebrating the week of the twenty-second through the twenty-eighth this year. And I think Lauren shared with you all the copy of this, but Richland Library will be partnering with us to have a book display the total week. So they definitely want to encourage parents to come out, check out books about healthy eating. For adults, they'll have some cookbooks and other related healthy materials. Also, on Wednesday, we'll be having the Department of Social Services on Bull Street has a farmer's market. That is once a week. And so as we talk about jobs and businesses, talking about health and wellness, they have a local farmer and he has a lovely spread. I went out there about three weeks ago. So that's ten AM to one PM every single Wednesday at the State Department of Social Service building. So if you're there, I would love to see one of you all in attendance. I'll be there from about ten to about eleven as I'll be trans-traveling to another event. And then as well as on Thursday, so Councilman McDowell and Duval, y'all are aware that we do a lot with summer and after-school meal programs. So we will be highlighting after-school meal programs. And we'll be at the Boys and Girls Club of Ben Arnold in the Rosewood area from four PM to five PM. And would love for you all to join us there. So some other events we have in the county portion, and then also in Lexington and Irma, but we would love to see you all at any of the events listed here that are in the city limits.
Right, and I do believe Lauren sent us this, um, we do have the agenda and everything. So, Ashley, thank you as always. Um, and you're, we've got the Food Policy Committee coming up too. We're going to talk about that a little bit later. Um, Kathy, do you want to say anything? Adventure is a partner?
Adventure is a partner. We totally support the excellent work of End Child Hunger and what it does for the children of our community. And Adventure thanks you for your current support and past support. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Well, guys, thank you so much. If y'all would join me, let's go ahead and get the proclamation.
Ms. Devine, at this time, um, if you would like, we could go ahead and add the Ridgewood Missionary Baptist Church Young Women's Auxiliary Day Proclamation.
Okay, we've got that. And who's going to be accepting this? Y'all come forward. Hi, ladies. Okay, and we'll read this, but is there anything that you guys want to share with us before we read the proclamation?
Sure. Yes, um, every year, uh, the Ridgewood Missionary Baptist Church Young Women's Auxiliary, YWA, we host one of our largest events in October, and it's called the Pink Dress and Bowtie Social. And this event is done in support and awareness of breast cancer. And so we're, we partner with the Palmetto Health Foundation in order to raise funds to go, um, towards the Breast Cancer Division of Palmetto Health Foundation in order to support, to bring awareness to breast cancer, and also to remember those who we've lost that are loved ones who've battled with breast cancer. So that's one of our biggest events that we, um, do for community support. But we also do many other different, um, mission events and service projects throughout the year to include Walk By Faith where we collect, um, shoes for the homeless. And we also, um, do Handbags of Hope where we collect, um, personal items and hygiene stuff for home, for the homeless as well. That's just to name a few of the ventures that we actually do. And, um, our goal is just to glorify God as we service the community.
Thank you for all y'all do with, with the community. So I will read this. Excuse me. Whereas in South Carolina, Ridgewood Missionary Baptist Church Young Women's Auxiliary serves the city of Columbia through outreach ministry and missions under the pastoral leadership of Reverend Fred W. Coit. And whereas through biblical principles, they train women ages eighteen through forty-five how to effectively minister as young missionaries. And whereas they support city-sponsored efforts, including the Mayor's Walk Against Domestic Violence and Palmetto Health Breast Cancer, and go above and beyond doing local community mission projects such as the Pink Dress and Bowtie Social, beauty backpacks, Walk By Faith, and Handbags for Hope. And whereas an active member of the Gassimony Missionary Baptist Association, the Young Women's Auxiliary, Auxiliary effectively serves Ridgewood Missionary Baptist Church and surrounding communities. And whereas the city of Columbia commends Ridgewood Missionary Baptist Church Young Women's Auxiliary for dedicated outreach missions and ministry for thirty-plus years of active community involvement and a ministry that supports the growth of young women spiritually. Excuse me. And whereas cognizant that Ridgewood Missionary Baptist Church Young Women's Auxiliary is prosperous ministry in our state, the city of Columbia takes great pleasure in recognizing and honoring Reverend Dr. Lily A. Burgess for responding to the call to build a ministry where young women would receive effective training and ministry through missions. Now therefore, on behalf of our mayor, Stephen K. Benjamin, of the city of Columbia, along with all the members of Columbia City Council, we do hereby proclaim October twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen, to be Ridgewood Missionary Baptist Church Young Women's Auxiliary Day in the great city of Columbia. And we urge all of our citizens to recognize and participate in its observance.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, as you take your seat, as always, the mayor's timing is impeccable because I was going to see if you wanted to hand off to him for the next one, the National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Prevention Day Proclamation, or would you like to read it yourself?
I'll go ahead and read it. And I do have, um, some folks here. And before we read it, I'm going to, um, invite Kristi Bother and Eric Bother to come forward. Kristi always has some elegant words as before we give our proclamation, and so I wanted her to have an opportunity to speak.
Thank you, as always. It's always good to see, see you all. And, um, after having been here several years in a row, now I feel like we are friends. So it's always good to see you. This is Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month, and October fifteenth is seen by many as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day. For us, it has been over eight years since our second daughter Naomi died in my second trimester, considered a late miscarriage. And yet we birthed her, we buried her, and we mourned her. Since then, we've had four other losses, but we've also welcomed our rainbow baby, who is now five. Our last loss was nearly three years ago. After all that time, you might think that we've gotten over it, that we've moved on, or even forgotten about it. But nothing could be further from the truth. I don't know any parent who forgets their child, no matter how short their life. How can we forget any soul who has changed us however briefly they lived? When we learn to laugh again or have another child, it doesn't mean that we've forgotten the children that we are missing. It just means that we've allowed that love and those memories to carry us forward into the future. Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day is just that. It's a day to remember and to invite others to remember with us. Because I think one of the greatest fears that a parent has who loses a child is that that child in heaven will be forgotten on earth. So this proclamation, year after year, means the world because it lets us know that our children are not forgotten and that we are not alone in remembering them. So I want to thank you on behalf of everyone that, um, that I have come into contact with over the last several years and everyone in Naomi's circle. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. And as always, beautiful. Everyone knows I welcomed my rainbow baby earlier this year. Uh, he turned eight months yesterday. Um, but, and I think a lot of people think that once you have a rainbow baby that you forget or that everything in the world is okay. And although you have joy, everything is not okay because you still miss your baby. And so as long as you have this council here, everyone up here, and, and Mr. Davis's absence as well, we will continue to recognize and remember all the angel babies and, um, and really support all the families who have been affected by Pregnancy and Infant Loss. So whereas Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day is a day of remembrance for pregnancy loss and infant deaths, which includes but is not limited to miscarriage, stillbirth, SIDS, or death of a newborn. And whereas over twenty-three thousand infants died in the United States in two thousand and thirteen, and South Carolina's infant mortality rate dropped remarkably in two thousand and thirteen. And whereas nearly one in four women have experienced the loss of a baby in pregnancy. And whereas the loss of a baby remains a sad reality for many families and takes a serious toll on the health and well-being of families, as well as our community and the nation as a whole. And whereas even the shortest lives are still valuable, and the grief of those who mourn the loss of these lives should never be trivialized. And whereas recognizing Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day will neighbor this, enable the citizens of Columbia to consider how they can meet the needs of bereaved mothers, fathers, and family members, and work to prevent the causes of these deaths. And whereas the city of Columbia appreciates the hard work from groups such as Naomi's Circle that help parents who have experienced the loss of a baby in pregnancy or infancy. Now therefore, on behalf of our mayor, Stephen K. Benjamin, mayor of the city of Columbia, along with all the members of Columbia City Council, we do hereby proclaim October fifteenth as National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day in the great city of Columbia, and we urge all of our citizens to recognize and participate in its observance. We can go, but Eric, do you want to say anything?
I'm fine. We're just real thankful, so thank you so much.
Thanks. All right.
Mr. Mayor, we are at item twenty-seven. Um, we have one addition, and I'll, I'll let you know. Maybe, sorry.
Sure. First, I want to again thank Ms. Devine. I know the city manager recognized me because historically I've read their, I've read the proclamation and, uh, but the continued strength and intestinal fortitude to these praying families. But thank you for not just dealing with your own grief, but continuing to provide leadership for so many people who need, who need guidance at these difficult times. So God bless you. Recognize Ms. McDowell for a personal privilege.
Anytime there's a new business that resurrects from the soil, particularly in District Two, we are very, very appreciative. I'd like to recognize Meek Brown and Kelly Simmons. Meek is a television personality. She's the adequate person, etiquette person. Manners matter. She is also the, she's also the, uh, the operator and owner of, um, um, Health, a healthcare agency within our district, Circle of Life. We want to recognize these two persons because they bring tremendous gifts to our city. The mentoring piece, of course, is very critical and very much needed in our area. And I'd like for them to come, Mr. Mayor, if they would. Would you all come? This is Kelly Simmons, the owner-operator of K Three, a mentoring program. And of course, Meek is the mentoring person. So thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. McDowell. Hello, councilmen. Uh, my name is Meek Brown, and I am owner of a home care service called Circle of Life where we will cater to the veterans, the disabled kids, as well as the elderly. Okay, so we're going to put that to the side and talk about the more critical aspect of while we're here. Kelly and I, Mr. Simmons, have done some research prior to this meeting, and we know that there is still a gap, uh, with our youth in the city. And we are passionate about trying to do something about it. Uh, Mr. Simmons has had a mentoring program for over ten years, such as myself, and my, uh, program is called Lavish Consulting. And what we do is teach today's youth the importance of manners and social skills to bring about change in our community. Uh, I was recently proclamated, um, Lavish Consulting for some, a week called Manners Matter Week. And I am wanting to partner with the city in hopes that we can have a mentoring explosion. I thought, uh, the droopy pants was just a fad, and it is killing us all softly. And I think that we really need to do something about it because we are dropping the ball on many of our youth, and image is everything. Um, I would like for Mr. Simmons to come up and talk briefly about his program as well.
Good evening, council. Honored to be here. And, uh, like I said, I'm Kelly Simmons III with, uh, KS Three Global Consulting, but also a KS Three mentoring program, empowering youth to be ambassadors of change. And mentoring works. I mean, it worked in my life. Of course, I was blessed to have both parents in my home, uh, but then it also took the village. So there were others that were involved in my life to help me become successful. So I wanted to give that back and create something to be able to do just that. What we found is that there are continuing issues that arise. And, uh, of course, as we're working with, uh, parents and families and things of that nature, you know, they want you to fix their child, but... But what we realize is that in mentoring, it really starts at home. And so what we do is we empower the parents through parental workshops, but also to work with the kids and empowering students in the classroom and outside of the classroom, to let them know that, you know, opportunities are out there and they are available, but at the same time, that is possible. A couple of clients that I have, of course, that we work with, Richland One, Richland Two Schools there, but also Willow Gray Opportunity School, and we see that in three categories, that dealing with students or dealing with youth in terms of mentoring, academics, behavior, and then career preparedness, the issues that we have to face. But with the two clients that we've worked with, we've seen where the behavior has had to be addressed. And so we've addressed that, and some of the benefits that we've seen, you know, with that, is to come back and of course, be able to provide curriculum and things also outside of the classroom to work with that, to make sure that there's a progression with our young people. So we're very, very excited. One thing that we decided to do to take it to the next level, of course, is to provide the city, families, youth in the city, Career Mentoring Expo. Because of course, it takes more than just one mentoring program. There are several great mentoring programs out here, but we want to be able to showcase that in the city, to let mentoring programs know that there are opportunities, but also let schools and communities know that there are agencies that can address those issues. And so, we just want the city to be at the forefront of that, and to be able to launch a movement, if you will, from mentoring and letting our students and letting our families know that we do care about the success of our children.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Meek.
May we have a picture, please? Of course. (laughing) The Honorable Mayor Stephen K. Benjamin.
Perfect nexus to Books With Barbers. I'm going to ask Jasmine to come up in a second, but I want to read this proclamation. Whereas the most recent results from reading tests of the National Association of Educational Progress shows girls outscoring boys at every grade level and age examined, and whereas research shows that even before attending school, young boys exhibit more problems in learning how to read than girls, and whereas in some of America's long-term communities, researchers have found only one age-appropriate book for every 300 children. Whereas Books With Barbers is a community-based literacy program that creates child-friendly reading spaces in barber shops for boys to increase their fluency and comprehension. And whereas Books With Barbers works to close the reading achievement gap for boys by helping them identify as readers, and whereas Books With Barbers connects books and reading to a male-centered environment. And whereas Books With Barbers' goal is to make culturally relevant, age-appropriate, and gender-responsive books easily accessible for boys, to not only reduce negative life outcomes in the future, but also have an immediate positive effect on boys' reading motivation, confidence, and achievement. Whereas the recognition of this day promotes education and literacy awareness by encouraging citizens to become a part of a national network of local literacy advocates. And therefore, I, Stephen K. Benjamin, Mayor of the City of Columbia, along with my fellow members of city council, do hereby proclaim October 25th, 2017, to be Books With Barbers Day in the city of Columbia, and urge our fellow citizens to recognize and participate in its observance. Many of you may know, for all of us, the barber shop's kind of a safe space for men. It's a place we go where you can hear some incredibly tall tales. You can hear about that massive fish that got away. You can hear whatever you want to hear about sports, and all the different things that we like to talk about. It's an incredibly safe space where boys have a chance to be mentored by men who've been mentoring people sometimes for decades upon decades. And the work that's being done by Books With Barbers, modeling some incredible work that's being done all around the country, but focused right here in Columbia, in Richland County, and I know stretching out all over the place, is admirable. And Jasmine, you want to say a quick word, and then please take a picture, please?
First, I would like to thank you all for having me here today. Books With Barbers' sole mission is to educate boys and to close the literacy gap that currently exists between male and females in our public education school system. We look to celebrate the day by having family nights in the barber shops that are located here in the city of Columbia. We also have recent partnerships with Allen University's basketball team, which is going to offer tutoring within the barber shops that are here within the city as well. And we look forward to increasing the literacy and the education of our boys, not only on October 25th, but on the many days to come afterward.
Amen.
We also have Johnny Baez here, who is the very first barber who was here to partner with Books With Barbers to say a few words.
Yes, I just want to thank all you for giving us this day, being that I am a graduate from University of South Carolina, class of '08, and I did struggle a lot as a kid when it comes to reading. I'm just here in support of Jasmine Mix. She came to me after being denied from a few other barber shops, and for me to be the first barber shop, it's an honor, in all honesty. So I just thank you guys.
Thank you. Ms. Mix, how many barber shops are you in now?
My goodness, now we are in 386 barber shops in over 14 states.
Awesome. Awesome. (inaudible) have with barber shops across the city as well. So we're thankful for that continued leadership. I'm city manager.
Yes, sir. The Cooperative Month proclamation, the Honorable Mayor Stephen K. Benjamin.
All right. We've got some exciting things happening. And Ms. Herbert, I'm not sure who's in charge, but I think you're going to tell us, okay?
Good afternoon.
Hello.
We are so happy to be here, and we want to thank you all for being here. I'm the first one to speak on our dry spell. We're not going to have a dry spell at all. Excuse me. We're not going to have a dry spell. I'm so excited about our co-op. We're going to have healthy food. I'm trying to lose a little weight myself, so I get a chance to buy some healthy food. I'm just excited. Today has been a magnificent day, Mayor. I just want to tell you, it has been a magnificent day for us in the District Two area. Everything that's going on, the listening that you're doing for us with this food co-op, and our partners, we were working hard. We're working hard on this, real hard. And we're excited for the two-mile and three-mile range. Our person that's in that area will have a grocery store, and a healthy grocery store. One will not be able to close up on us, and I'm excited about it. I wasn't expecting to speak today, but, you know, I don't want to stay too long. But I want to thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Wild.
Mr. McDowell, you have been a blessing to our neighborhoods. Mayor, you have been a blessing to Mika. Mr. Devall, I'm learning you.
I just keep reappearing, so I mean...
Yeah, but I want you to come out in our area and see what we are about, just getting ready to boom, and I'm excited about it. You know, I don't want to stay up here too long.
I'm going to give you his cellphone number, okay?
Yeah, give me his cellphone. I do have a cellphone number, I really do. I have aggravated every one of you on city council, and I'm not ashamed to say it.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I'm not ashamed to say it. I have been on my best behavior lately.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
It's a good aggravation. Thank you.
And we got a good steering committee.
Wonderful.
Very good steering committee.
Thank you, Ms. Wiley.
And if I can just add, we have an event on Friday, the 20th, to officially launch the cooperative. And I'd like to invite Mayor Benjamin, members of the council, and everyone here to join us. It's going to be on Friday, the 20th, from 4:00 until 7:30 at Drew Wellness Center. And you can learn more about the grocery store we are working to bring to this community, as well as have the opportunity to get one of our fancy little bags with information, with kind of the name of the cooperative, and become an owner. The really important thing about having a cooperative model for the store is that you're not just a customer of the store, you're an owner of the store. So by coming out to the event on Friday, you can actually pledge to become one of the owners and really play a part in not only bringing a sort of this community, but keeping the store and the community, keeping the profits in the community, keeping the decisions about what we want our community to have in our community.
Thank you. We're so excited. Ms. Wiley, some of you may not have seen the news today, reference that we officially cut the ribbon today on what should be our first lead gold-certified building in city government, our new utilities building on Beltline Boulevard, an adaptively reused car dealership that lay fallow for several years now as a model for sustainable development. And we're very proud of the work of our staff and all of our partners, working with the community and delivering such a high-quality product. If things continue on the path that we see for this cooperative grocery store, the newly-named City Foods Cooperative Marketplace, we will be addressing the challenges of getting good, healthy foods to the people. And I believe it won't just be in the two or three miles around there, but I'm bringing my check on Friday to join the cooperative in recognizing the centuries-old, the value of the centuries-old model of cooperative economics and what it can mean in helping to build communities. It's downright exciting, and excited to proclaim that, I guess this is the first time we've done Co-op Month in the city. It's become a national event in 1964, being celebrated in October all across the United States of America. For those of you who may not know, cooperatives are businesses locally owned by everyday people who join together to solve a problem, meet a need, or achieve a shared goal. They're recognized by the laws and statutes of our great state as member-owned, democratically-controlled enterprises, giving people a real stake in their communities and their economic destinies. Cooperatives can meet a wide range of essential needs, including accessing healthy food, employment, marketing, and purchasing farm products, providing financial services like credit unions, delivering electric, telephone, and cable services, and providing healthcare, housing, and insurance. We're excited that the co-op model has really caught on here, and we've got a great community-led effort, working arm-in-arm in partnership with the city and others, that's going to make the City Foods Cooperative Marketplace a huge success. So we're excited about joining you all, and also by proclaiming October 2017 as Cooperative Month in Columbia. All right? All right? I don't think he was getting sedentary today. (inaudible)
leadership and her team, and helping pull all this together.
EGSR?
Yes, sir. We are excited, Mr. Mayor, to add the presentation of the Statement of Support for the Guard and Reserve by General John Finan. And I know General Finan is here with other distinguished guests, and he will take you all through the signing of the statement and a group photo op.
All right. Fantastic. General?
Mayor, councilmembers, Ms. Wilson, good evening, and thank you very much for allowing us to be with you tonight.
Thank you.
I'm John Finan, a retired active-duty Air Force officer, but now I'm a volunteer for a Department of Defense organization, a nationwide volunteer organization called ESGR. That's an acronym for Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve. Here tonight with me is Major General McCarty, who's the Deputy Agent General for South Carolina National Guard, Lieutenant Colonel Boenkel, who's with the South Carolina National Guard, our State Chair for ESGR, Eli Wissert, and our Area Chair, Number Two Chair, Bob Gimsley. So thank you for being here tonight. As many of you might not know, nationwide now, the Guard and Reserve Forces accomplish almost 50% of the armed forces' missions and deployments overseas. Our Guard and Reserve Forces here in South Carolina certainly do their fair share. But the success of those missions depends on three things. One, the fact that we can hire young men and women that want to serve their country and do these kind of jobs. Two, the family and the friends that support those people that take those jobs. And three, very important, are the employers that are willing to hire these young men and women, knowing full well they're going to have to take time off for training, and they're going to have to take time off for deployments, and you hold those jobs for them until they come back. So that is absolutely crucial. Now, the city of Columbia is known as a military-friendly city. The city agencies in Columbia hire many, many Guard and Reserve, particularly the police, the fire department, the maintenance areas. Each city agency head has already signed what we call a Statement of Support, saying they support Guard and Reserve, and they've got that plaque hanging in their office somewhere. So I'm just delighted tonight that Mayor, you, and the city council members have agreed to also publicly support our Guard and Reserve Forces by signing these statements of support. And incidentally, these statements of support are cosigned by the Secretary of Defense. If you look, you've got one there. Mr. Mayor, we've got one in front of you. And so on behalf of our statewide Guard and Reserve, our ESGR, and all the men and women you hire that support the Guard and Reserve, we thank you very much for this opportunity to come in and for your public support and affirmation of that support for the Guard and Reserve.
Sure. Thank you, General.
(applause)
Absolutely. Now, General, it's a, I'd like to read the statement as well, if that's all right, because it's important. As I indicated to you, I had my first opportunity to sign this statement as a state agency director, working for Governor Hodges 18 years ago, and actively support EGSR then. And I will tell you that oftentimes, we think of the service of these incredible men and women, obviously deployed, I don't know how many times, over the last 16 or so years of war. But we got a chance to see the active service right here at home in 2015, when some of the most crucial services that were necessary to keep people safe and alive were performed by both the Guard, the Reserve, active-duty Army, State Guard as well. We saw what service really meant firsthand, and sometimes it's difficult when you're removed from it, but when you see it at work right here... but when you see it at work right here in your own community, it is incredibly moving. I had the privilege today with Susan McPherson and some others to go on post today and see the recognition of two of the young men, active-duty Army privates who are in training at Fort Jackson that we lost a few weeks ago, and to recognize, again, the incredible sacrifice. And I don't think it's asking too much to ask employers all across the state, and certainly the model that behavior here at the city, to say that when you're out serving your country, we will stand behind you and with you, with you and your families every single day. So we recognize the Guard and Reserve are essential to the strength of our nation and the well-being of our communities, and the highest American tradition. The patriotic men and women of the Guard and Reserve serve voluntarily. In the honorable and vital profession, they train to respond to their community and their country in time of need. They deserve the support of every segment of our society if these volunteer forces are to continue to serve our nation. Increased public understanding is required of the essential role of the Guard and Reserve in preserving our national security. Therefore, we join other employers in pledging that we fully recognize, honor, and comply with the Uniformed Services Employment and Reemployment Rights Act. We provide our managers and supervisors with the tools that they need to effectively manage those employees who serve in the Guard and Reserve. We appreciate the values, leadership, and unique skills service members bring to the workforce. It will encourage opportunities to employ guardsmen, reservists, transitioning service members, and veterans. We will continue to recognize and support our country's service members and their families in peace, in crisis, and in war. And we signed, of course, with the National Chair of ESGR and, of course, our Secretary of Defense, General Mattis. And it's a privilege to do so. And we want to thank all of you who are here. I think we're going to take a picture together. Usually, General, I'm taking orders from Van McCarty. It's been a pleasure the last several days taking orders from you, General. Some of you may not know General Finan, but if you want to get something done, you give it to him. He'll make sure it gets done, and it's a privilege for you all to join us. Please join us for a photograph.
Mr. Mayor, we are at Item 29, the introduction of the 2017 Love Columbia Photo Challenge winners. This is always a neat presentation that has involved our community. Ms. Alicia Utesi, our Director of Public and Media Relations.
Thank you, City Manager Wilson, Mayor Benjamin, and city council members. We're excited to be here this evening to introduce our 2017 Love Columbia Photo Challenge winners. This is an annual contest that we conduct on our social media platforms, including Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. We ask our followers to enter the contest by taking a photo of their favorite place or landscape or thing in the city of Columbia, and also posting it on the social media platform, hashtagging "Love Columbia" and tagging the city. And this year, our winners have been decided by our followers as well, who then determine by the likes which photo they like best on each platform. So we let our followers participate by actually picking the winners. Our winners this year, as I call your names, you please stand and come forward. Our first winner that we want to announce is for Facebook. It is Mr. Clinton Formby. A name that we're all familiar with. Our Twitter winner is Susan McPherson. Susan? And our winner this year on Instagram is Andre Buchanan. And Mayor Benjamin, you have some awards for our winners, and the photos are on your screen, and also they've been on display this evening during the city council meeting. And we want to congratulate all of them. Thank you.
Please, please.
Ask, Clifton, is that during the eclipse?
No, ma'am, it was during the snow, excuse me, during the snowstorm a couple of years ago. It just was a solar flare.
Okay, wow.
That's beautiful. Susan's got some serious Twitter fingers, too. I was, I was. And Andre, that's beautiful. I'll have these for you all.
Item 30, the sidewalk vending public hearing. Ordinance number 2017-088, granting a franchise to Kaiser Concessions LLC for operation of a stationary sidewalk vending cart on the northwest corner of Main Street and Washington Street. And this is not a new...
Same vendor. Is there anyone here speaking in favor of or against this?
Are we in compliance?
Is he in compliance with the ordinance as drafted?
We still need to bring the item that you all requested to a committee meeting, but this, I believe your directive was for any renewals or...
That was the one pending application?
Correct.
But it is in compliance?
Yes, sir. It's a renewal.
Is there a motion?
It is?
It's a renewal.
Right, that wasn't, I mean, the question last time is that we denied an application because it didn't fit criteria.
Does this fit the existing criteria? I think we're talking to y'all. Somebody answer the question.
Can we extend his franchise by not voting on this tonight and just let him? We need to have the administrative committee look at the criteria for the franchises, because I think Mr. Rickaman is correct. There may be some, not in compliance with what our ordinance says, and that's the problem we had with the last one.
I don't believe that's the case with this one, but I'll let Sidra address your question.
From the packet, they are in compliance. They are one of the locations that have already been operating there. So this is just a renewal application?
The issue before with the compliance is whether or not it really was a cart. This one is a cart.
This one is a cart.
It's currently operating now. So this is just a renewal of that current location?
Correct. It is a cart.
A cart now.
Yes, sir.
Wasn't a cart previously. It's a cart now.
This one?
Yeah.
The issue that came to my mind when I read through the supporting material was the list of things the applicant would sell. And the ordinance is pretty specific about what can be sold, and I'm not sure all of the things that are on that list fall within the ordinance. Candy, salads.
I believe he took exactly from the ordinance. He wrote it exactly from the ordinance in his application. So those items are all listed within the ordinance.
Is there a motion? What's the effect if it's not renewed? Is it expired, or is it continued? I sense some unreadiness. I have no unreadiness. But I think you were alluding earlier to saying Van McCarty had a table or something, Daniel, what were you saying?
Yeah, I mean, previously, when we voted on something else, he was not in compliance. And the council was fine with that. Since then, I think the application has changed, and he's going to be in compliance, which, if he's in compliance, there's no reason for us to hold it.
Is there a motion? So move. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, any more discussion? More discussion. Mr. McDowell?
I think it would be to our advantage that this be an issue that we refer to administrative committee, and that we come prepared at our next council meeting to make that recommendation. Now, are there time-sensitive issues?
With some practical effect?
Well, he would like to continue operating because that's one of his main sources of income.
I guess that's the question, Mr. McDowell, is that if it's not addressed right now, does he have to cease operation in the interim?
He would, yes.
I would support re-upping him then.
Move the previous question. Kirk Colerole?
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye. All right, and maybe in the motions, we need to go ahead and make sure it's clear that the committee needs to take this up ASAP, whatever it's going to take up.
Thank you.
Item 31, moving into ordinance's first reading. Ordinance number 2017-069, authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the air rights development contract between the city of Columbia and Hallmark Homes International Inc.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Saying, move the previous question. Kirk Colerole?
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item 33, ordinance number 2017-086. A third supplemental ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of City of Columbia, South Carolina parking facilities refunding revenue bonds in one or more series.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Saying, move the previous question. Kirk Colerole?
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item 34, ordinance number 2017-087, authorizing consumption of beer and wine beverages only at the 2018 famously hot New Year event.
Can I just ask one question?
Reach your hand. Yes, sir.
How does this, do we not need to add alcohol since, I mean, spirits? Since the VIP area serves spirits?
I don't think, I don't think the spirits are served on the street, in the street, in public, right away. I think those are all interior.
It is. They're not, I thought, because I thought within one year, that it was outside, VIP.
I think some people did some BYOB. I'm just joking, Daniel. It may have been the first year. I think it's just... Is there a motion?
It was moved a second.
I think there was. I think we have not yet.
A second, thank you.
All right, move of Mr. McDowell, second of Ms. Devine. Discussion. Move the previous question. Kirk Colerole?
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
As Mr. McDowell says, that's the first time I've ever heard a uh-uh vote. Aye.
Item 35, ordinance number 2017-089, authorizing the city manager to execute a lease renewal agreement with Branch Banking and Trust Company BB&amp;T for the use...
Move approval.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move the previous question. Kirk Colerole?
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item 36, ordinance number 2017-091, granting an encroachment to First Presbyterian Church of Columbia for installation and maintenance of concrete sidewalks, landscaping, and an irrigation system within the right-of-way area of the 1,400 block of Lady Street and 1,200 block of Marion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move the previous question. Kirk Colerole?
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item 37, ordinance number 2017-092, granting an encroachment to the OBS LLC for installation and maintenance of a concrete and brick paver walkway within the right-of-way area of the 1,500 block of Lady Street.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move the previous question. Kirk Colerole?
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item 38, ordinance number 2017-093, authorizing the city manager to execute a 10th amendment to purchase agreement between the city of Columbia and Bright Myers 2001 LLC.
Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move the previous question. Kirk Colerole?
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Moving into a period of resolutions, item 39, resolution number R2017-105, amending resolution number R2014-023, designating Whaley Street Neighborhood a residential parking permit district to add 100 mall Gary.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Rickaman?
Clarification. I was looking at it. I only see two people on the block had signed the petition. Is that normal? I thought you had to get everybody who was requesting to do that.
Only those two individuals, the block that is in question only is five homes, and the two are owner-occupied. So only those two would sign. When this was enacted in 2014, for some reason, not to my knowledge, this particular street was not included. And they do have the USC spill over. So they're only asking to be incorporated as the rest of the neighborhood.
So how do you handle the other folks? I mean, the people who own those houses have the same, I mean, they may not live there, but they're property owners. Why would we not engage them to make sure that, I mean, I doubt they have a problem, but I mean, to me, there's a process we should go through.
To my understanding, only the owner-occupied would be applicable here in the process, to my understanding.
How, why, how is that different than what we do at the university? Because in the University Neighborhood Hill, those folks who have rental property also get that same designation, because those people are renting, and they get that for the time that they're there.
I'm not aware. This was not the way that it was explained.
What I'm concerned about is that we seem to be applying things differently throughout the city, and it's got to be uniformed.
I very much agree.
So I'd like for us to reach out to these other folks and find out what their needs. I'm not going to vote against it. I think if the folks want it, we want to provide that, but I want to make sure that everybody's equally provided.
You want to hold it, or you want to go ahead and move forward with it?
I'm fine with it. I just ask that L would reach out to them.
We will. It's very much needed on the block. I don't anticipate any pushback, but we will definitely reach out to them.
I doubt there's pushback, but they probably want to take advantage of having that parking for their bedrooms.
We've had a motion and a second, right? Move the previous question. Move the previous question. But Mr. McDowell, Kirk Colerole?
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item 40, resolution number R2017-106, authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding between the city of Columbia and experienced Columbia, South Carolina for a wayfinding project.
Move the wayfinding project?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move the previous question. Kirk Colerole?
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye. We want it on time and under budget, guys. All right? Everyone's smiling except for Bill. Thank you, guys. Exciting. Diretting exciting.
Item 41, resolution number R2017-107, authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding... the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding between the City of Columbia, Richland County, South Carolina, and the Columbia Housing Authority for the Gonzalez Gardens demolition project.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Saying none. We'll move the previous question. The clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin, we do need to take up an item prior, well, we can do it either after other matters or right now, but we held the ice skating rink, item number twenty-three, under the first other matters section. Would you like to take that up at this time, sir, or at the end?
I know some of my colleagues are excited, and some are not so excited. I want you, I want you to identify a temporary park, a place-making opportunity that has brought fifty-two thousand people and a half million dollars in revenue in over the last five years. This is an exciting opportunity that's helped us rebuild downtown, and I move approval of it for one more year.
A second.
Moving second. Discussion.
Point of order, Mayor. This item has already been brought up tonight, and I move in the opposite direction. What does the parliamentarian say about that? Does my motion stand, or?
No. I asked you withdrew it, so you withdrew it. So you would vote down, you would vote no on this.
So the motion has been made. In second, I'd like to speak.
Please, absolutely.
Mayor, this is the ice skating rink on Boyd Plaza, and I have spoken against this every year.
Yes, sir.
Of my two years here. I'm not against ice skating. I'm just against the City of Columbia spending three hundred and almost ten thousand dollars over the last five years supporting this. This is not something that the City of Columbia needs to be supporting. It's something that City Senate Partnership of the Columbia Chamber of Commerce needs to support. We're losing sixty thousand dollars a year in support of a small group of merchants, and I don't think that is something the city should do. I would also like to question where the one hundred and fifteen thousand dollar figure comes from. If you look at the expenditures over the last five years, the lowest one on there is a hundred and twenty-four, goes up to a hundred and ninety-nine, but basically they're around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So how are we getting a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar expenditure?
Let staff speak to the expenses. I would disagree with the idea that this supports a small group of merchants. I've seen very, I've seen very few of any of the small group of merchants ice skating on Main Street. There have been children from all across the region who've been attracted to a place-making opportunity in the urban core, to the tune of fifty-two thousand young people. And this has been about the opportunity to attract people back to historic commercial corridor, and it's been a small piece of the puzzle that's led to the revitalization of Main Street, and that's why I support it every single year. I know we look at the expenditures. We spend money every single day on everything, including parks and rec. I dare say that many of them, or very few of them, also return almost half a million dollars back to the coffers that this, that this does. So I would like to make that point. Well, but I understand your concern, Howard.
The expenditures that you're speaking of comes in staff salary, equipment that we have to bring in for the rental during the duration of the operation of the ice rink, and our insurance fees and various licenses.
Randy, I think what Mr. Duval was asking was how is it one fifteen? It was one forty-five last year, one forty-nine last year. Are there some efficiencies recognized and some purchases made previously that are not this year?
I think that's what he's explaining. The additional comes from the stat, the things he's mentioning. The one fifteen is the actual contract.
It's the actual contract. Okay, okay, so overall, overall cost is probably consistent with what we've done previously, the actual cost of the contract. This is a much more transparent idea of everything.
It went out for bid as well, and we had one bidder.
What do we charge for the skaters?
It's ten dollars for adults, eight dollars for children, Thursday through Sunday, and discount days on Monday through Wednesday, eight dollars for adults and five dollars for children.
What is the budgeted item for this, Randy?
The, that's, you're talking about the one fifteen? The total budget is one thirty, one thirty-three that was allocated for funding.
For the contract, we, you achieved a savings with Magic Ice this year.
This year, because last year, I believe, the contract with Magic Ice, once we put it out for bid, was, last year was one twenty-eight.
So the contract is for one fifteen. You've got one thirty-three in the budget, and you're going to be able to support it for the difference between one fifteen?
Yes, sir, with all the expenditures that we have to spend to support the ice rink.
Randy, just an inquiry and question. What has been the, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
What has been the?
The injury instances. And the injury instances, of course, it becomes an insurance issue, I'm sure.
Right.
What has been the number of instances, and what has been the liability there?
Other than a few bumps and bruises, councilman, there hasn't not been any significant major injuries that happened on the ice rink.
No broken bones?
No broken bones that I'm aware of. No, we've had.
Bruised fillings, I'm sure.
We had one child get cut for, as a result of an ice rink, you know, but she was received proper care, got checked out at the ER. But over the, you know, the number of years that we've been running the ice rink, there's been no significant injuries that I'm aware of.
The number of persons last year that, what's comparatively, what were the numbers last year compared to fifteen? Do you have those figures, Randy? What are they? What were they?
Okay, last year, total attendance was ten thousand five hundred and sixty-nine people. That was the highest year, with the exception of two thousand thirteen, which was the first year in operation. Two thousand twelve, thirteen was fifteen thousand two forty-five. But again, in that first year, we contracted the entire services with the ice rink out.
All right. Mr. Rickaman?
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment that we support the ice skating rink, but this, this financial commitment not come from parks and recs. And I say that from the truth, is you look at it over the years, and I've heard it from different folks. We have a lot of needs in our parks and recs. I would ask that we look to hospitality, because that's where it should come from, and not to come from parks and recs. Sixty thousand dollars a year, or whatever the number is, and you can look at it multiple ways, can go a long way in our parks. And I tell you, I hear about it every day, and I would ask that we consider making that type of adjustment.
I'm not sure, what's, what's the, I'm not sure, sixty thousand in age tax right now, I think we spend it all.
But there's a way to do that, which is that we reimburse.
Parks and rec next year.
Parks and recs from the surplus before any other amount goes out.
Providing that there's going to be.
I'd support that.
There's always surplus in hospitality. If you remember last February, y'all let it fly away.
It flew away, yeah.
Ms. Devine?
Well, I would say that I would support that, but my comment was just going to be, so why am I so loud?
Excuse me?
I was just saying, I sound so loud, so I was trying to get back. Anyway, just my comments were going to be, you know, I, I don't go to the skating rink every year, but every year I hear from citizens and visitors who love it, and it is an amenity. But I would just share, you know, we just approved, wasn't the funding, but we've done the funding in the past, but we just approved the wine and beer for famously hot New Year. I've actually not been to the New Years in the last two years, but I actually do the festival in front of the Marriott, in front of the skating rink with my kids the last two years, and it's just been amazing, the people out there who are in town enjoying it. And, you know, I know that we hear from people who don't particularly like this expenditure, and they'll say, well, it doesn't pay for itself, you're losing money, et cetera. You know, that argument people can give for every single one of our parks. I mean, we've had people make that argument about drew wellness. We've had people make that argument about other things that we're providing. You've got to look at whether or not we're providing something that's going to make the city money, or we're providing something that enhances the quality of life that we have in the city. And I think that having the skating rink, although it was novel idea to me, and I wasn't, I was kind of lukewarm about it at the beginning, and I don't go all the time, but I will say that I know people who enjoy it, and I think that it gives, it adds to the diversity of what we offer our citizens and our visitors. So I do like it. I would say, again, I would support Daniel's amendment, but I would add to that, that I would, as of next year, we're likely going to have to look for another area as well, and so maybe as we make that adjustment, we would also look at partners that might subsidize it, because it has been a benefit to the City Senate Partnership and others. But I would say, if we ask for the City Senate Partnership to pay for it, they're probably going to, they're going to ask us to give them more money to help pay for it. So.
They got plenty of money. I've seen their balance sheet.
So, you know, but I think that as we look to maybe move the venue and whatever costs are associated with that, maybe we seek partners to help it in the future. But I think it's an asset to downtown living, and the visitors and citizens love it, so I would support it.
So what's a proper motion if we are going to approve funding of this now, of course, with a placeholder that if and when surplus age tax is available, go back and reimburse? What's a proper way to do that? All right.
So you made the motion. I second it. So you have to accept the amendment?
Oh, I accept, Mr. Rickaman.
Okay.
And that's, and is that the delta, Daniel, or the total amount?
Total amount.
Of the, of the, of the contract?
The contract, the one fifteen.
The contract. Well, I'm not sure, but the part of the costs is staff, is our staff.
Yeah, but he, nowhere was in the budget that we, we had funding for staff for the ice rink. So he's actually taken away funding to supplement that, to benefit, which we all agree there's some benefit to it, but I think it'd be a nice way to do that, is to fund it in a whole, if possible, from hospitality, which I think is where it should be next year.
I've never seen significant growth there in age tax. I will, I will begrudgingly support the amended motion. Amendment accepted. Move the previous question. Kirk Colerole. Yes, parliamentarian? Approval of the, of the contract, approval of. Is to, at the end of the fiscal year, to reimburse Parks and Rec the amount of the, of the, of the contract and the expenses from age tax. Upon availability.
That's according to availability.
Yeah, I mean, that's all you can do.
That's the amended version.
That was the original.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay.
When you get a preacher who's also a parliamentarian and makes things real interesting, y'all. Clerk Colerole.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
No.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Thank you, Randy. Additional other matters, beginning with item forty-two, the October two thousand fifteen flood recovery program update. Ms. Missy Kaufman, Budget and Program Management Director, and Ms. Keely Thibodeau, Principal with the Landmark Consulting Group.
Good evening. Oh, okay. Good evening. I'm Keely Thibodeau with Landmark Consulting. I'm here for the flood recovery update. Okay, great. So the overview of the flood recovery program is we're using four different federal sources in order to fund the program. At this point, we've got projects under the FEMA Public Assistance Program, the NRCS Waterway Debris Removal Program, which is complete, the HUD CDBG Disaster Recovery Program, and the FEMA four oh four Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. So a quick update on the FEMA Public Assistance Program and the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. On August twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen, FEMA implemented an immediate needs funding, thereby suspending all funding. And you may have seen that in the national news due to the other disasters that have been occurring in Houston, and in Texas, and in Puerto Rico, and also in Florida. Basically, Congress needed to appropriate additional funding into the FEMA program, and it was affecting our program here. On October third, we were informed by the state that FEMA has lifted that as Congress appropriated additional funding. So now we're able to kind of continue with reimbursements for work that's completed.
And this was a nationwide freeze. It wasn't directed at South Carolina.
Absolutely. That's correct. So, so we've been making quite a bit of progress. There were originally two hundred projects, individual projects, in this program, and as of now, all of those projects are primarily, I think, a hundred and eighty-eight of those projects have been completed using city forces, and work is now underway for the twelve remaining projects that would actually require engineering services. So we have task orders out with four different engineering firms in order to get the design underway for those. Those were, those contracts were awarded on September first, and design services are expected to be completed in the spring. And these are some of the examples of city forces at work at Bradbury Drive, Lake Elizabeth, Hayward Street, and Northwoods Golf Course. The Columbia Canal Project is certainly the largest project in our portfolio. The project worksheet or the grant was delivered to FEMA on June twelfth. It includes repairs to the headgates, the breach, the canal dikes, the hydro plant, and this is estimated at a cost of a hundred and seventy million dollars. And that includes repairs and certainly bringing it up to current code and standards. We have a designer onboard, and essentially we're waiting for FEMA to make a determination about the submission that we've made. So we're awaiting comments and review, and the city all the while is evaluating other actions that we may be able to take in order to achieve progress on the canal. It's taking months in order to get review and approval. So one of the intermediate steps that we'll be taking is, or we hope to take is the repair of the headgates. The city is requesting emergency repair of two headgates using the CDBG DR funding, and you'll hear a little bit more about that later in Ms. Said's presentation. But the repairs will improve the capability to manage water for the Columbia Canal Water Treatment Plant. So that's a portion of the project that we want to advance in order to kind of keep things moving. The status of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program is that there was a suspension of awards, as I mentioned earlier, due to FEMA not having enough money at a national level. But since that has been done, the state has informed us about the four active projects that we have in consideration, and provided us a schedule for when they believe those will roll out. So there's two applications are for thirty-two residential property acquisitions. One application is for commercial property acquisition, and one for application is for dike upgrades for the wastewater treatment plant. This slide is to really show you the process after, post-award or obligation. So once we find out or get the official word on the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program and the CDBG DR Program, the anticipated property acquisition process is still, there's still several other steps that need to be taken in order for us to be federally compliant and receive those funds. At this point, we're actually at phase three, which is the environmental and appraisal process. We have signed our contracts with the environmental firm, and we're negotiating the task order, and we'll be scheduling the beginning of that work beginning next week. But we just have to let you guys know that the process is still a lengthy process. It's still another six to ten months in order to get through all of these other, all ten steps that it takes in order to get the approval for the funding for this.
So how does it, I know I may be jumping ahead, but, you know, it just seems to be a.
Let me get my microphone.
It seems to be a very frustrating process for folks out there. It seems to be a very frustrating process for folks out there and why it's taking so long. And I get that Matthew came and everything else, but if we wait, every time something else happens, we're never going to be able to get
Sure.
folks taken care of. What can we do to help expedite this process for folks?
It, you know, it is a long process. It's a long process all over the country. It's not, that's not specific to, to the Columbia program, but the city has done a number of things in order to expedite the process. You know, we got started as soon as we could in early summer, rolling out all of the programs. We've learned more about what the current needs are of our citizens and are modifying the program in order to service more people and give them more of what they need today. But all of the items that are within the city's control are on an expedited schedule. So we've added additional resources, we've modified the schedule, we've held additional community outreach sessions in order to make sure that we're servicing everyone as quickly as possible and as many people as possible in the program. But unfortunately, waiting for those approvals is the part that's out of our control at that point. So, but, but we're doing all that we can to make it happen.
What can we do from putting pressure on our representatives? Or, I mean, it just, you know, we're, we're getting ready to embark. It's going to be 2018.
Well, I think that's something that we can certainly discuss, you know, internally about escalating the concerns that we have to see what additional support we can get at that level.
Thank you.
Sit, please, Tamika.
And this might not be, probably not a Keely question, but a Gloria question. But I guess, understanding that this is a long process that is out of our control at this point, is there any resources or anything that we can do to assist the homeowners that are waiting? And where's Gloria? Gloria, if there is, and I'm just wondering if, and I know everybody's case is different, but if we know that this might be another six to eight months, there are people that are still displaced from their homes, and some people may have had an opportunity to get alternative housing, but some people may not. Do we have any resources internally that we would be able to actually address the needs of some of our citizens on a, maybe a short-term basis until this plays out?
Sure. So what we've been doing thus far, whenever we receive applications for people who, for some reason or another, don't qualify for the disaster recovery programs, then we refer them to the United Way, some of the VOAS that they're working with, to provide assistance. And there could be instances too, if the applicant is in the position to do so, we also have other programs on our regular loan program side that could be of assistance to people as well.
And that's kind of what I was thinking. I mean, maybe that is an option, that depending on some of the needs of people who are waiting, maybe we could look at what we have available and see if there's something that might could address some of their needs, knowing that it's going to take a minute.
Well, we, we do even that. For example, our MAP program is pretty popular, particularly among our seniors. And so if they're in a position where we can get them done sooner, then we could do that. But one of the things that we have to keep in mind that is that the majority of our programs are limited to those who are 80% and below the LMI.
So how do we help somebody? I have a liaated lady that I've passed on to staff. She's three, $33 a month over the limit. And, I mean, at that point, you gotta go, wait a minute. We're going to deny this person because they have $33 more a month, and they've lost how much, and they have all this damage, but we can't get in the program? So, you know, I've got a lot of concerns, not from our staff's perspective, but how do we get a, how do we help these folks? And fine, and you know, I don't know if the loan, if there's ways that you can, we can help somebody amend that. I, I don't know. But I mean, to me, if you're, if you're $400 a year away from the limit, I mean, and you've made them wait 24 months...
So, we're going to talk about that a little bit in the CDBGDR presentation, but as our program stands right now, it's limited to 80%. So if you're over that, even if it's a dollar, unfortunately, you won't qualify. But we are recommending some amendments in the substantial amendment that we're prepared to present to you tonight and ask for approval that will increase that to 120%.
Gloria.
Of the AMI.
On, on the chart that we're looking at up here, we are probably, we're in, almost in Phase 3. Is that, is that correct? We're in Phase 3. Phase 5 is the Real Estate Division Legal Department Review. Can we proactively jump to Phase 5 and start reviewing the, the legal documents necessary for closures so that we can expedite those last few steps?
Sure. So, right at the bottom, some of the, some of these steps are not necessar, do not necessarily have to run sequentially. They can, they can run currently. So yes, there, there is potential for that for some of the properties.
Are we doing that? We, we've identified 17 properties, I believe it is.
I'm not sure where we are.
We, we are doing some internal discussions, especially that's in regards to making sure about for future use of them and things like that. But that's exactly what the, the point there is that we will, some of these things are happening
As we...
in tandem with other steps. The environmental piece just happens to be the longest.
I didn't understand exactly what you said about the timing. The environmental is being started?
Right. We, we have signed the agreement, and we are negotiating the initial task order, and we expect to schedule next week.
Okay. And you, didn't you say something about when you thought this process might be to the point where we can make offers?
Well, I'm not, what I said was, I think it'll take between six to 10 months to get to the 10th step.
Well, I'm not worried about the 10th step. I'm worried about the sixth, sixth.
Oh, sixth step, okay. Well, what I, what we can do is come back with a, with a schedule. We can present the schedule to you.
I think it would, I think it would help us and those people that have been suffering for two years to know that the light of the tunnel is either a month away, or two months away, or three months away.
Sure. That's, we absolutely can do that.
All right.
And, and I only have a couple more things to add. So we do have a tentative hazard mitigation decision and award schedule from the state. We are expecting in November for award for the commercial property, December for the substantial damage for residential properties, and January for the other residential properties. And so far, there hasn't been an award schedule information on the wastewater treatment plant, like, project. But naturally, schedules are subject to change by FEMA.
These are FEMA?
Yes, sir.
Not yours?
Yes. CDBGDR. Yes, there's, there's several sources at work here. And so just to, do you want me to just skip this one? Gloria, can you do yours? Okay. So, just program developments on the CD, CDBGDR status. Our case managers have processed 324 applications for various programs, and 255 of those have passed a preliminary eligibility review. HUD has awarded the city of Columbia an additional $6.1 million in CDBG funds on August 7th, bringing the city's total allocation of $27.1 million. The action plan substantial amendment has been drafted and presented to the public, and the substantial amendment includes modifications to the existing programs and adds new funding requests for additional programs. And the recovery dashboard tool is accessible on the website. It has current and accurate information on every single project that's being funded under all of the federal programs. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Thank you, Keely.
Thank you, Mrs. Thibodeau.
This time, I think Gloria will come forward with the, the, the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program. Our community development director, Ms. Gloria Said.
Good evening. So, earlier, I passed out to each of you a blue folder. In that blue folder is the PowerPoint presentation that we're about to go over. And also included is a, a spreadsheet that indicates the LMI for the area based on percentages of income. I thought that would be good information to have handy in the event that you're having any questions about percentages. So I won't go over the program update. Ms. Thibodeau just went over that. So what we want to talk about this evening is the substantial amendment. And that's something that we've been working on pretty heavily over the last six weeks. As you know, the initial action plan was approved in January of this year, and we rolled out programs beginning toward the end of May. And we also received notification of an additional allocation of the $6.1 million. So as a result of that, we knew that we were going to have to do a substantial amendment. And based on that substantial amendment, we also learned some things through the process from taking applications from, from citizens and hearing some of their feedback, recognizing that there were some that were slightly over the 80%. So looking at all of those things, we knew that once we were ready to do the substantial amendment, we were going to take those things into consideration to determine what changes we could make to improve the program so that we can help as many people as possible. So we're going to cover with you tonight the program modifications, the proposed program projects, and the proposed budget allocation. So again, the overview is, as I mentioned, we receive an additional $6.1 million for disaster recovery. Here it shows that the total funding with the previous allocation is $26 million.1. But we also added an additional $1 million, which is the total that was mentioned earlier, from our regular CDBG revolving loan fund. So it's really a total of $27,155 that we have to assist people who were impacted by the storm. We're going to provide you with current program statuses, those that work, those that weren't as attractive or heavily utilized as we thought. We're going to talk about infrastructure. We did not improve that, have that in the previous plan. We're also going to talk about a strategy to propose some new funding to assist households, both owner occupied and renter occupied. So some of the program modifications include us reducing the funding for our CHAP program from 12 eligible properties to date in 20 that we would potentially serve. And I know that doesn't look like a lot, but we're just basing that on the maximum of $150,000 per property. I can tell you that based on what we've seen so far, we believe that we're going to be able to serve more people based on the applications. We're estimating at this point about 50 people that we will be able to serve based on the repairs that we are seeing thus far. We're also eliminating the FEMA registration requirement for our Columbia buyout program. This is the one that you were speaking of earlier where there are 17 applications that have already been deemed eligible. Under our CDBGDR buyout program, it allows for participation of non-contiguous properties. That's a modification. And also, all the funds will be expended once the 17 are funded. And you'll see, once we go over the budget, what those numbers look like.
Gloria, can I ask that? So how do you know that? Have we already appraised them, and we know what the buyout amount will be for the 17 properties, or?
We have an estimate. We have not made any official awards at this point because we still have to go through the environmental review process. But as you mentioned earlier, with the disaster recovery program, we have done some title searches and as well as ordered With the small rental repair program, the modifications includes us decreasing the funding cap from, from $150,000 to $100,000. Also, we're going to reduce the number of years for maintaining the affordable rates from three years to two years. And we're adding a reimbursement component. One of the things that we were hearing from people is that they had, they had to go into their pensions or retirement to pull out money to make repairs. So we wanted to implement some type of reimbursement to help those people who had to do that. Also, we transferred funds because we reduced the maximum from this program to other programs. For the elevation reimbursement program, this one, this is one of the ones that wasn't as popular as we thought it would be. We do currently have six people who are eligible for this program, and we transferred the remaining funds to, to other programs. For the minor repair program, this is for homeowners. We are adding the urgent need as a national objective, Councilman Rickman. And this is where, again, we have talked to people who barely, were barely over the 80%. So we added the National Objective for Urgent Need to this program so that we can go up to 120%.
That's great.
We also added the reimbursement to this program as well and eliminated the FEMA registration requirement. And we increased this funding for this program because this is one of the most popular programs. We also have a small business disaster recovery program that we are still working on. We're thinking that by the time this is all done, we may have about six to 10 businesses that will be able to participate in this program. We did change it to LMA area as opposed to LMI. It was just a better fit. And also, we reduced the term of the loan to two years as opposed to three, forgiving it at 50% each year. Those businesses that are located along the commercial corridor that were heavily damaged, damaged are the ones that we're focusing on. We reduced the gap financing. And also, we're asking, wanted to make sure that the applicants would demonstrate a contribution to economic development for revitalization. Our proposed programs. So this is what we, we've added. We have added a multifamily affordable housing fund, and this fund will be used for construction of affordable rental housing for low to moderate income households, up to 120%. And the way we'll be able to do that is we're going to look for multiple funding sources. That's where we will be able to ask the builder or contractor to, to serve those people who make over 80%, which our funds are limited to, so that we can, can serve more people. Our goal is to come back with mixed income projects. Also, we've added the canal headgates repair program that has already been mentioned to replace two of them. And also, we added a program for the HMGP match that has already been applied for through FEMA so that we can assist with that.
But can I ask a question? In your, in your action plan amendment, what is included in your planning line item?
A lot of the work that is being done right now, like through contracts, some of the work that our consultant is doing, some of the work that our environmental consultant will be doing at this, at the beginning level for the initial environmental assessment, those types, those types of things. Anything else? The question was, what costs are included in planning, correct?
In the planning, yeah. In the action plan amendment, there's reallocation of funds. It lists all the things that we were just talking about, but there's line items for, for planning. And I was trying to understand where those funds were going. And I was trying to understand where those funds were going.
HUD allows you 5 percent of your total for admin costs and 15 percent of your total for planning, which includes most of your professional services, environmental, your management, legal fees, like we were doing, the appraisals and the closings and that kind of thing.
It's just a larger number than where we started and so trying to understand.
Yes, because we started with only five. And we realized that we really did need to use the whole 15 percent that were allowed.
Gloria. Let me back up just a minute. We talked earlier about the 17 houses that have been identified.
For the buyout program.
With the buyout. I think Ms. Devine asked whether or not they had been appraised. They have?
Yes, sir.
Now, will that number increase anymore? And I think I heard you say that there was no FEMA registration?
That's one of the changes that we're making. We're removing that requirement.
Okay. All right. The houses that have been appraised and we are buying out on them, is there a percentage in terms of 60, 40, 80, 20, or anything similar to that?
Not for that program because it falls under urgent need. So, it's not limited to 80 percent.
Okay.
Okay, so here's the budget. The changes, again, the admin and planning, both of those were allocated at 5 percent at the beginning, but we knew that we grossly underestimated that once we got into the program. So, this time around, we have made sure that we added the maximum, not saying that we'd spend it, but we wanted to make sure we had the maximum there that could be utilized through the life of the program. Also, with the CHAP program, we're showing where we reduced the approved budget allocation by $356,000. And again, we say that we will serve about 20, but that's based on the maximum of 150, but we do know that we'll serve more people than that. The homeowner buyout program, we added $58,000 to that because we know that we have 17 already eligible. The small rental repair, we actually reduced that as well. We didn't get as many people as we thought when we did our outreach previously, but we did take a different approach with some additional outreach that we've done. And we know that now we'll have about 50, perhaps slightly more, that we'll be able to assist in terms of landlords repairing their houses for LMI households. The minor repair program, again, you can see by the number, this is our most popular program. We have increased that as well. And our small business program, it's $200,000. Hopefully, we can serve about 10 businesses. So, that subtotal is $19 million point nine. And again, we talked about the new proposed programs that we're adding to the substantial amendment for HUD's consideration for multifamily housing, $2 million. For the Canal Headgates, the two that we're wanting to replace, $4 million. And the 25 percent match for HMGP at a million dollars, which again puts you at the $26.1 million. Are there any additional questions at this time?
All right. Ms. Devine?
So, just Gloria, so next, it's a substantial amendment. It actually has to go to HUD for approval?
Yes. So, what we've done through our previous outreach, we had a public comment period. We received four public comments. So, we've opened that again just to give people some additional time to comment. That will begin tomorrow and end on November 1st. And we must submit the substantial amendment to HUD on or before November 10th. We'd like your approval to go ahead and do that this evening.
I move approval to allow submission for a substantial amendment.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I thought you said a second.
Yeah, I did sound like I did. Move the previous question to court caller all.
Mr. Rickman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Thank you, Gloria. Thank you, Council.
Yes, sir. I would say that hopefully, if this is a business owner, particularly those families who are in risk areas, we, I think, might need to call over. Some of them are sorry, but this is a good start. I appreciate you all. These figures, you know, you have this for me, you know, for me, you have, I think, I don't need to call over. Some of them are sorry, but this is a good start. I appreciate you all. All right, thank you. Ms. Said?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, Ms. Moore and I just wanted to review the November and December 2017 City Council meeting dates with you all. And I do believe you were provided with the 2018 calendar. Oh, my apologies. I think you have the 2018 calendar in your boxes for your review. And if you all could look at those dates and let us know if there are any conflicts, you know, major conflicts, like we normally do, take a look at it before the start of the new year.
So, for November, and I guess we haven't stated this yet, but November 7th is election day. So, and I know Erica will be busy and Sam and I will be busy. So, are we going to cancel that meeting?
7th?
Well, we, you know, we are prepared to move forward with the November 7th date if you all would like.
We should, we should. Nothing traditionally have not met on election day.
Okay. We just wanted that to be you all's prerogative and decision.
I forgot there was an election coming up.
I looked at her like, okay, you for real.
So, I'm sorry, I was distracted. So, no meeting on the 7th. What else we looking at?
We just wanted to go over the dates with you all to make sure there were no additional changes. I will say that on December 5th, and I think this will probably be my first time having to miss council, if you all don't move. And I'm certainly not asking you to on my account, but I will be at globalization for my Liberty Fellowship.
If the necessity presents itself for some type of a special meeting, we'll dialogue with, with, with staff on that issue. But let's right now prepare not to meet on the 7th.
No meeting on the 7th.
No meeting on the 7th. But she's saying December 5th.
So, November?
I agree to meet on December 5th if we can.
Mr. McDowell's going to come here and meet by himself on the 7th.
No, I was saying, you said the 5th, I guess. We, I mean, globalization is very important, but I think we could move forward.
Did you say you wanted to do her evaluation while she was gone?
What now? I'm just kidding. So, as of right now, we have meetings for November, the 21st, December the 5th, and December 19th. To wrap up the calendar year. And then, if you all could look at the 2018 calendar and let Ms. Moore know of any conflicts that she sees, that'd be great.
All right. All right. Thank you. Is that, we need action?
No, sir. We just wanted to make sure all hearts and minds are on the same page. Thank you.
All hearts and minds are clear.
That's right. Our appointment period is one individual to the food policy committee for your consideration.
Council, I, I supported the appointment of Namita Koppa, who served as an original appointee. She's been relocated, leaving University of South Carolina, and nominate Sarah Simmons to replace her.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
I'd like to nominate Brenda Peterson, who is in District 2. District 2 is underrepresented on the council and is a vital part of the food process here. We, that's, we probably have more food needs in District 2 than anyplace else. I need to have some representatives from District 2.
I accept your nomination as well as their second of that nomination because I will tell you, Ms. Simmons is also going to be a business owner in District 2. She's a James Beard awardee chef who's fully involved in our, not just our food policy issues already, but also our efforts on Beltline Boulevard and also our efforts to train employees for the food service industry as well. All right. Remember how we do this when we have more than one nominee? Those, those, those in favor of Ms. Simmons advancement, raise your hand. Is that, is that fair?
Are we going county style?
County style. All right. Those in favor of Ms. Peterson, raise your hand. All right, Ms. Simmons is appointed to the Food Policy Committee. Thank you.
And what I would say is that we, you know, of course, there's other ways.
We'll have other opportunities.
There's other ways for Ms. Peterson to be involved.
We'll have other opportunities. So, all right. Do we have any else that popped up we need to send to work session? I know we were talking about making sure the next, between now and whenever we meet again, we need to make sure we take out the food cart issue in Administrative Policy Committee. So, let's make sure we hasten that along. And I think that's it. We have at least two citizens who signed up to speak. Is it Steven with a P, Puleo? It may have been for another item earlier. Are you, are you signed up to speak, sir? Did you put, did you get to speak or are you just signing in? If you're, if you're, if you're going to speak, you need to speak at the microphone, please.
This is at least my third time here. And I had spoken with a staff member, two of yours, and I'm trying to get.
Speak in the mic. I can't hear you.
Microphone, so we can hear you.
I'm trying to get my justice regarding a ticket that the officer did not allow me to have a jury trial. And that's been over a year now, probably going on two years now. And I've been here three or four times and I spoke with your staff member and I just get nothing. And I don't think that's justice and the American way. That's pretty much it.
So, you had, you received a ticket, you requested a jury trial from the court?
Was not allowed.
Not allowed by who? The court, the officer does not make that decision? The court, the judge makes that decision?
The officer, yes. He instructed me to leave.
How do we handle these, y'all? Tell us what to do. See, Attorney Teresa Knox, officers don't determine whether or not you have a jury trial. It's up to the judge. Actually, it's your right to have a jury trial. So, I'm not sure exactly what got lost in, in translation. But I will tell you that the answer is not here before council. We, we don't get into trials and jury trials and tickets. But hopefully, we can direct you to Judge Turner or whoever else needs to resolve that. So, I regret the fact you have to keep coming back here, but, but that's not what we do.
He instructed, he instructed me to leave and.
He instructed you to leave?
The city here as a police department.
Yes, sir.
I believe that's.
So, he instructed you to leave and then had that trial in your, in your absence? Is that?
It wasn't my absence. I was informed, instructed.
To leave? And then, and then was that, okay.
Yes.
Ms. Knox?
Shoot it back.
Ms. Henley?
Good evening, y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Puleo.
Is this the retired Ms. Henley?
It doesn't appear so.
No such thing.
If I can be retired. Good evening, Council. I appreciate time before you this evening. We need a fire station in the Olympia area. Again, I want to share with you the area that that station serves, which is from Gervais Street to the 77 Bridge to the river and 95 percent of the University of South Carolina. Needless to say, the majority of all the student housing, private apartment growth has gone on in that same district. One engine is not sufficient for that many build-outs and a good many of them of multiple So, we're in need of acreage to provide for a fire station in that area. The station needs to stay in that area because of its ISO ratings. We are completely surrounded by rails. And so, the, the station needs to remain in the Olympia area proper. Land values are increasing. Right now, it's roughly a million plus per acre off of Assembly Street. A fire station needs to be on a main artery. Assembly Street is our main artery. The city unfortunately at this point has no fee for service, nor do we charge impact fees for development. And that puts us as a government, I believe, at true disadvantage in terms of being able to afford such basic services as fire stations. A station's cost to have three bays, which is what we will need to sufficiently deal with the population increase that is currently in place, will cost anywhere from $3.5 to $4 million just for the building alone. I appreciate developing in a floodplain comes with special challenges. The ballpark property comes with those challenges. However, each year that we go on and no one develops that property, it becomes more and more expensive to build out in a floodplain. So, we're not going to be going back and figuring, oh, it's going to be cheaper to build in the floodplain. It's not because we're having an increase in the storm water load. We all know it. Rocky Branches is just inundated with the amount of water that's coming through. And with each successive development, more stormwater is coming our way. So, Bright Myers might indeed be successful during the 10th Amendment in finding someone who can be respectful of that fact, that the land is laid that way to be a natural sponge. That's what it's there for. And be respectful of the scale of property. You know, 140 foot, 140,000 square foot building is ill-suited for such property, but maybe they will come around to finding that. And of course, the community will support any development that is within keeping of the proper use of the property. If not, however, let's not consider an 11th amendment to provide yet another opportunity. Right now, our fire station, if we use the ballpark property, and only two and a half to three acres of that property, will cost us $4 million. Without that property, we're having to buy 2.5 to three acres. That, that suddenly jumps our cost to four, you know, to 7.5 million. So, in terms of cost to the public and the need for a higher use for that property, as a taxpayer and as a citizen, I have great concerns that we're ill-prepared in, in that fire district. And every, every month we go on, it gets more and more expensive to do. So, thank you very much for your time.
Those are good, good and important points, Vai. Thank you. And I know previously we had some discussions with Bright Myers about the inclusion of some of the property there, particularly for a fire station. I think we also took some green space. Let's make sure, as we discuss this over the next, the development over the next several months, see if we can pull that back into the discussion.
Two and a half acres at the, at the very least. Three would be perfect for a station that we could plan for future growth of the area. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vai. Thank you so much.
the proper use of the property. If not, however, let's not consider an 11th amendment to provide yet another opportunity. Right now, our fire station, if we use the ballpark property, and only two and a half to three acres of that property, will cost us 4 million. Without that property, we're having to buy 2.5 to 3 acres, that, that suddenly jumps our cost to four, you know, to 7.5 million. So in terms of cost to the public and, and the need for a higher use for that property, as a taxpayer and as a citizen, I have great concerns that we're ill-prepared in, in that fire district. And every, every month we, we go on, it gets more and more expensive to do. So thank you very much for your time.
And those are good, good and important points, Devine, thank you. And I know previously, we had some discussions with Bright Myers about the inclusion of, of some of the property there, particularly for a fire station, they also took some green space. Let's make sure, as we discuss this over the next, the development over the next several months, see if we can pull that back into the discussion.
Two and a half, two and a half acres, at the, at the very least, three would be perfect for, for a station that we could plan for future growth of the area. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Devine, thank you so much.
Thanks, Devine.
All right. All right. Is, no other citizens have signed up to speak? Is there a non-debatable, irrefutable, non-discussable, if that's a word, motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Second? Move the previous question, the current caller, all.